I have a motion to go back into public session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Host, good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And I have a motion to go into, can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence for armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the mother of Daniella Leonard? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. We are going to start with public comment, which is on agenda-related items, and we had asked for those to be emailed to the district clerk by four P M. Did you receive any of that?
No, I did not.
Okay, we are going to have a live public comment at the end of the meeting, and at that point, you can talk on non-agenda-related items. What we're going to ask, though, is that your, the name on your screen matches the name you're going to give us, and you will be a Yorktown resident, because you will identify yourself with your address. So please be aware after the end of the meeting. Thank you. Ron, pass it over to you.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to share a couple of presentations this evening. We have a presentation on our budget series, Mr. Cole and our team, Mr. Shea, Ms. Forsberg, Mr. Rosen will be participating in a budget presentation on instruction and general education, special education and technology. Before that, I'd like to provide the board with an update and certainly our community with an update on our progress to reopen. So we bet if I can ask you to pull up the presentation, thank you so much. If you can go just go back to the beginning. With with regard to our reopening, we're excited. I sent out a letter. I appreciate so many people joining us this evening on relatively short notice. But I've been providing reopening updates essentially at every one of our Board of Education meetings, and I'll continue to do that. With this evening's presentation, that you can advance to the next slide. I just wanted to update our community on where we are with our progress. We're on schedule. So the schedule that I shared with our school community earlier this month is still intact and we're still on target for the dates that were set out in that April and March calendar, March and April calendar. Once we're phased in in-person learning will resume five days per week. The remote option will be there. I'm receiving several questions regarding, well, will the remote option be there in September? And the truth of the matter is, I don't think anyone knows the answer to that question. I don't think it's realistic to have an answer to that question at this time. What we do know is that we're going to offer it for the remainder of this school year. And while we believe that we're creating the safest possible environment, we certainly respect someone's concern with putting their children back into a school setting. Just by nature, students will be in a classroom with several other students for a prolonged period of the day. We understand that. We respect the concern and the consideration, and that's why we're going to continue offering the fully remote model. But there is no information twenty-one, twenty-two. I don't think that information will be available next week. I don't think it'll be available the week after that. So we're monitoring the situation. We'll continue to watch it as we learn something new. We'll certainly share that with our school community. You bet you can go to the next slide. One of the other clarifications that I'd like to make is with regard to returning students at a distance less than six feet. There has been some concern that had that that has been brought to my attention. I've received some emails on this saying, you know, Dr. Hatter, I don't know if I really support bringing students back to full-time in-person instruction. Can we reconsider this? And the short answer to that is no, we're going to bring our students back, and we want our students back, and our students need to be back. And I think we all acknowledge that. But I do want to just make sure our community is aware that because we're reducing the distance between students, the multi-layered mitigation approach that we're taking, and I do want to assure the board that the multi-layered mitigation approach that we're taking is not going to be diminished. Yes, the distance between students will be less than six feet. Generally, it will be between three and six feet. The, and I say that three to, I know that's a pretty wide range to provide to our board and to our school community, but different class sizes, both the enrollment in the class and the square footage of the class all play an impact on the spacing. But please know the masks are going to be required. I actually just sent out an email yesterday to our faculty and staff regarding some of the ventilation and filtration, just best practices for our school district. Keeping the windows open, make sure the unit ventilators that we have, which introduce fresh air from the outside at a rate of a thousand fifteen hundred cubic feet per minute. So when you look at a classroom, a general-sized classroom, we are introduced, the air is changing over multiple times during a class period. We also have the air conditioners in the class that are outfitted with MRF thirteen filtration that are bringing the air through, recycling the air through the MRF thirteen filtration. And then all of the other mitigation measures that I'm not going to go through. What I do want to share is the vaccine and some of the developments, and thank you to Westchester Medical Center Health. They have just been so terrific to our school district, and I'm so grateful to them. Tonight, I can announce to you that one hundred percent of faculty and staff who wanted access to the vaccine have been given access to the vaccine. So I will not tell you that one hundred percent have taken the vaccine, but we have done the good work of providing access for those who want it. And that's a promising development here, and thank you so much to just so many of the great organizations that have been helpful, specifically Westchester Medical Center Health. Surveillance testing, I'll speak to a little later on in the presentation, but we can go to the next slide. The update will be in a few different genres. I just want to share the community transmission. The best predictor of COVID within our schools is the community infectivity rates and how we're doing as a community. I can't emphasize that enough. I will tell you that I believe our schools are safe. I send my own children to our schools with the belief that they're safe. The rate of transmission outside of the schools is something that we don't have control over. This is a partnership. The schools will do the work that you're entrusting us to do. The children wear masks. Again, I don't know how they do with masks, how the students do with masks outside of the school. I'll tell you, they are terrific, terrific in our schools wearing masks. I couldn't be more proud and more impressed. The numbers in our community are coming down, which is really encouraging. We hit another recent low with, I think we're down to about a hundred and fifty-one active cases, down from a high of about five hundred and forty-five cases, which was just after the holiday recess. We hit that that high level of five forty-five. But I do want to remind all of the families in our community. This is, this is one of those community lifts and community efforts that we have to just join hands in for our children. We have to make the responsible choices in schools, and we have to do that outside in the community as well. So masks are an important part of that. Just outside is better than indoors with regard to gatherings, all those types of things that we've been talking about and strategies we've been talking about for quite some time now. Because when the schools close, it's because COVID was brought in, enough people were exposed, and we can no longer staff the building because the Department of Health is requiring us to quarantine our faculty and staff. So I share that with you, and also as the vaccine becomes available, I'll give credit to the town. The town's had a really nice job of getting access to the vaccine for residents. They really have, especially for sixty and over who are eligible under the state's prioritization protocols. So as more vaccine become available, we'll see, and we have seen the numbers continue to drop, and hopefully they drop to a level where there are no more disruptions to the school day, and we could just go about educating your children or students. You bet you can go to the next slide. Our schedule, I just want to share this. I'm sure when I send out an email, there, there's just a wondering, gee, are we behind? Are we on target? We're on schedule. The planning is progressing well. Each schools are meeting within schools. We're not taking a district-wide reopening planning approach. We are having district-wide meetings with our leadership teams in the schools. But the planning considerations in a K through three building are far different than the planning considerations at a high school. We're just having different conversations at that point. So we're meeting each school where they are. You bet you know the next slide. The barriers, that is really important for us in our reopening. That is the actual barrier here image. Here is the actual barrier. So I just wanted to share that I've received some questions. Can you tell me about the barrier? Will it be difficult for students to see through the barrier? What I'll tell you is the barrier is quite clear. It's, you can see my screen reflected in it. There there's an extension that comes out here. So this idea of gee, when I look left and I look right, as I'm positioned at my desk, I do have the wings that that come out here on either side with the rounded corners for safety. It's a heavy-grade material. We have the approvals in place. They, the approvals from our, believe it or not, we needed approval, OSHA approval, fire rating approval, architectural approval on the barriers. Those have all been secured at this point. We ordered them. So just so you're aware, February twenty-second, the county officially relaxed their guidelines. February twenty-third, I had a conversation with the State Department of Health about our plan and the use of barriers. February twenty-third, the barriers were ordered. So I do want to share that. The first shipment is due March twentieth, which is a Saturday. But we will be here, we'll be ready, and we'll begin installing for our kindergarten students who return Tuesday, the twenty-third. The barriers are going to stay on the desks. At the elementary level, the desks are not really shared. A student has their desk, and we'll talk about the configuration of the desks a little later on. But the, the barriers will be disinfected daily at the middle school and high school level that we did disinfected multiple times per day. And that's just although we know based on the research that we've done, and one of the things that we have done a lot of is research on the transmission of the virus. We know that surface transmission is not the greatest concern. It's more airborne transmission, person-to-person in close proximity through respiratory droplets. But surface transmission is still a consideration. It's still something that we're considering, although the research that we have reviewed, and it's been extensive tells us that there is just minimal surface transmission. You bet you can go to the next slide. Transportation is something I do want to be transparent with the board and with our community on. Based on the survey, return to school. What we're seeing and what we're anticipating is one to two students per seat. Early on in the school year, students had maybe two or three other classmates on a full-size bus, and the ridership was really, really low. We have slowly begun to see the ridership increase, and that is something that the survey is telling us will continue to happen when we return students full-time. I want to be upfront with our school community and as honest as I can be with you. If you can drive your child to school or arrange for a ride, that may allay some of your concerns on the bus because I'm going to just be honest with you, your child will likely, if they're alone in their seat, they will have someone to their left, in front of them and behind them, and in every other seat on the bus. However, there will be many situations where your child is sitting with someone else. Now, if they have a sibling, that's terrific. They can sit with the sibling on the bus. But the days of having one student in a seat, skipping two seats, and having one student in that seat, and skipping two more seats, and having one student to seat behind that are gone. Those are gone, and that's just, that's one of the realities we face. And introducing new buses at this point in the budget cycle, where a bus is between forty and eighty-two thousand dollars or forty-one and eighty-two thousand dollars is not a reality for us. That that's just something that we're not able to do in our budget. There will be safety measures in place. The students are required to wear masks on the bus. That's not changing. The buses are disinfected daily, and then the high-touch surfaces are disinfected after the runs. The windows are now open. I sent out a memo to our transportation director advising that all the windows need to be open, the ventilation hatches need to be open so that we can increase the ventilation on the buses. And again, that will certainly mitigate spread. We're looking at car drop-offs and pickups. We're a little bit away from the details on that, but staggering drop-offs and pickups. Anybody who's participated in the drop-off and pickup, there's, there's a balance there. Yes, it's safer to drive your child to school because you're the only one in the school with the child. However, there's a line when you get to Mohansick or Brookside or Crump Pond, or even the middle school for pickup. There's a line. And that's just something that I'm hoping to just be able to provide information to our families and have you make the decision that that you're most comfortable with. With the other aspects of transportation, I've received questions, Dr. Hatter, will my bus stop change? What time is my bus pickup? What time will drop off be? None of that changes. Your stop stays the same, pickup stays the same, drop-off time, it all stays the same. So none of, none of those details are modified. You bet you can go to the next slide. Arrival, just patience, getting there really early. I get to work pretty early in the morning. I think those who have children in the middle school and high school know that I get to work pretty early. There are cars waiting at Crump Pond at that point, which I understand because I do have to drive by four of our schools just to get to work in the morning. They're, getting there early will not alleviate the wait. In fact, getting there closer to arrival may actually cut down on the wait. The health screenings have to be completed, and we are going to continue to take temperatures upon arrival. Bet next slide, please, thank you. The instructional day, I won't read through all of these items. I just wanted to provide the board with our current thinking on this. There are logistical details that still have to be arranged, the passing in between halls, in between periods in the hallways, some of the other aspects. But students generally are going to be three to six feet apart in general. Students are, we have more students choosing to return to in-person learning, which, which is heartening to see that our numbers of in-person learning are increasing. What I will share is that throws off a little bit of the balance on class sizes. So we may have gone into the year with twenty-four and twenty-five students or twenty-three or twenty-two or nineteen students in a given class. Now, some of the students who are fully remote at the elementary level, you have to change your teacher. You have to change classes because we have devoted remote learning teachers at the grade levels. So that will throw off the balance of the class sizes in those rooms. What we do need to do is there's balance in the class sizes, but it raises the in-person class numbers as more people transition back in, which is a great thing. We're going to have to do some more furniture removal. I toured a class at Crump Pond on Friday. I toured a class at Brookside last week that we've set up to just better understand what the spacing will be, and we're looking at removing some of the cubby areas, some of the other fixtures that are in the room just to get us some more usable square feet so that we can further distance. The one thing I do want to share, we're cohorting students to the greatest extent possible. The reality is if a student comes to school, either in the elementary school, the whole class would get quarantined. Or at the secondary level, each of the students within six feet of that student in each of the eight or nine classes would be quarantined. Please don't send a child you know is not well to school. I'm speaking from experience on this. We've had students come in who have shared with us that they took medicine in the morning to help with their temperature. Please don't do that. We're relying on you. We need your help. For this to work, we need everyone committed to the well-being of each other, to ourselves and to each other. So I really ask for your help on this. If your child's not feeling well, keep them home. They can come in the following day when they're better. They can come in in two days when they're feeling better. We want them back. We want them well. So I ask that you be mindful of and COVID is such an odd illness and that it can manifest itself in different ways. So I just ask that you be mindful. If you're aware of a child not well, please call the health office, follow up with them first. Please, there on the side of caution. The goal is not to open schools, it's to keep the schools open so that we don't have these frequent interruptions. So I do ask for your help with this. And, and we're trusting each other on this. So I put my child in a class with twenty-five other children. I'm trusting the other twenty-five families in the class will abide by the same rules that I want for my children, that you want for your children, and you're trusting me to keep my child home if my child's not feeling well. We're all in this together, and I really ask for us to work together on this. And just some of the other details. Lunch is still free for all students. So I'm going to tell you right now. One of the things I don't enjoy doing is packing lunch for my children. And I ask myself every day, lunch is free. Why am I doing this? So I would encourage you to take part in the free lunch program. It really is a great program that we have. It's available to all students. It's through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and I want to share with you just a little bit about the cleanliness of the cafeteria. They undergo multiple Department of Health inspections every year. There are surprise food handling and food safety inspections that happen throughout the year. Aramark, who is a food service contractor, does other inspections, their own internal inspections of each of the cafeterias throughout the course of the year. The food is, is clean, it's safe, it's nutritious, it's, and it's free this year. So we talk about backpacks, and I think about the weight of my child's lunchbox adding to that backpack, and then I think about having to pack the lunch and make the lunch and then clean everything up when it comes back home and all the Tupperware. What a great opportunity to, to use the school lunch program, and they're, they're really designing menu options that I think our students are enjoying, just having visited our schools during some of the lunch periods. I do see that the school lunch program is being utilized. There are some meals that are more popular than others with the different grade levels. But I'm sure on that menu would be something for everyone. Water fountains are off limits. Please don't rely on the water fountains. They haven't been operational all year, and they won't be operational for the rest of the year. Please bring a refillable water bottle. We have filtered bottled, bottle fillers stations throughout our schools, and I would encourage you to send your child in with a reusable or refillable water bottle. Next, next slide, you bet. Just lunch, that's an important one. Lunch will be in different locations, cafeteria, classroom, outdoors. We're going to try to maximize outdoor space. But I've said this from the beginning. I've said this from August. Outdoors is not Plan A. It's a great Plan B, but it can't be the plan. It rains, it's windy, it's uncomfortable outside for whatever reason, whatever weather reasons. So it will be part of the calculus, part of the planning, but not the plan. So I share that with you. Increased quarantines, the quarantine rules haven't changed. I'll come back to that in a moment. But I'm putting in another plug for lunch on this slide. It's free for all students. So I really hope that you take the opportunity to enjoy the lunch. I visit the cafeteria and I've been, I enjoy the lunch there. It's, I pay for it because I'm not a student, but it's delicious, and I would encourage you to consider that. You bet next slide. Dismissal, again, patience is the theme. The times are largely unchanged. We're looking maybe for some kind of staggering, but largely unchanged. But all the procedures still apply. So there will be that familiarity. And that's also one of the goals here in the reopening is it'll be a little different, but there will be a familiarity to the reopening for everyone. The activity buses are back and running. We have some in-person activities going, and there have been some questions as to which other activities would be returned to in-person. We're still working through the specifics of the after-school activities. You bet you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So the governor announced quarantines are coming to an end. Travel-related quarantines for domestic travel are coming to an end. I had a conversation with someone from the New York State Department of Health today. It's unofficial yet, so the governor said it, but it's not official. So I just want to share that with everyone. As of right now, what is governing us is the New York State Department of Health quarantines, and as of today, this, again, this is all subject to change. As of today, the quarantining guidelines are if you go to travel domestically to an uncontiguous state, you're out of the state for more than twenty-four hours, there's a quarantine period that's required, and then there's a test-out option for the quarantine that involves a test before you depart the state you visited and a requirement on the fourth day. So I just don't want you to be surprised by that. Spring break is coming up. I know the governor said April first. But the truth of the matter is it's the Department of Health that governs this. So we're awaiting guidance. I do expect the guidance, but it hasn't been issued at this point. International travel quarantines apply regardless of the governor's guidance. You bet you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. K five, one of the big questions I've received, and I just want to share with our board and our school community, specifically bullet two, individual students are quarantined. The instruction will be largely asynchronous. So when would, but with, we are looking at a live synchronous component as well. It will not be from the classroom teacher because the classroom teacher will be with their students, and that's the model that we've designed so that our students have the undivided attention of the teacher in the classroom. The ways to get quarantine generally, when your whole class is not quarantined, but, but a individual student or two, generally happens on the bus. That's generally where the quarantines occur. Yes, we have cameras on the bus, but the cameras aren't always conclusive. So there are going to be times where we're not going to be able to view the cameras and say, okay, we've identified the three students who are required to quarantine. The other thirty students are not required to quarantine. That will not always be the case. Sometimes the cameras don't work. It happens. Technology goes down, a camera malfunctions, the memory card was not deleted from the, or the cloud storage was not deleted automatically for whatever reason or another. We've seen all of these situations play out. We've also seen the situation play out where we were able to surgically extract exactly who was sitting next to us, the individual who was COVID positive. So we have seen this play out in both ways, where it's conclusive and not. Sick days are sick days. If your child's sick, they're home, and they should be focused on recovering and getting better, and we're looking forward to having them back to school the following day or whenever they're well enough to return to school. Bet you can go to the next slide. Same thing with six twelve, except just given the model of screen sharing. If a student is quarantined, they can access the lesson remotely. But if a student's sick, they're not well, they're ill, there should be a conversation obviously with the teacher, and there can be a conversation depending on the duration of the absence. We can absolutely look at those circumstances, but the kind of the one-day sick day, students not feeling well, they're not well, they're ill, and they can rest and return when they're well. A prolonged absence due to illness, we certainly can have a conversation on. Next slide, please. Just some other important considerations. I just want to share with our school community that we are working with Westchester Medical Center Health on a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant to support the emotional wellness, social emotional wellness of our six twelve students and staff. We're also looking at instructional support. The temperatures in the classroom will be a bit chilly. I just want to be straightforward with the community on this. It's going to be chilly. You open up a window, you turn an air conditioner on, you have these unit ventilators blowing in a thousand fifteen hundred cubic feet per minute of air. It can get chilly. Dressing in layers will be important. The days of I'm cold, let's shut all of these things off are not really upon us yet. So we're going to have to be able to keep, now again, the air conditioner is cooling to a reasonable temperature. It's not cooling to to a temperature in that I believe is unreasonable. But different people react to the cold in different ways, and I just want to be transparent that layers may be an important consideration. Lockers, we're not going to have the use of lockers, six twelve. That's just an opportunity for students to congregate. We are aware of the weight of backpacks. We're working through that. Lunch, we're working through the barriers situation in our cafeterias. The daycares, it's just something to be, to be mindful of. If there's a case at the daycare, we may not necessarily find that out. We need you to communicate that to us. If your child was exposed, many of the daycares will share information with us, not all. So I would just ask that you be extra communicative to us in that regard. On-campus parking for seniors, we're working through and how the passes will work. Our faculty and staff have been inundated from the start. They had my highest level of appreciation and gratitude. I just ask for patience in the responses. There will not be an immediate response. We will I just ask for patience and the responses. They will not be an immediate response. We will try to respond as soon as possible, as quickly as possible. But our principals, all the way through our faculty and staff are receiving so many correspondences on a given day that it just makes it mathematically impossible to catch up with the emails. I I will share with you, my inbox receives hundreds of emails a day. Literally hundreds of emails a day. It's a little quieter on the weekends, but hundreds of emails a day. I think the height of this pandemic, I was close to seven hundred fifty upwards of a thousand emails in a given day, which is just a lot in a day. So just please be patient. We'll reply, we'll respond, we'll respond as quickly as possible. But this is just an extraordinary time that I just ask for everyone's patience and 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 the replies. We we are going to be, we have a rapid COVID testing program for our faculty and staff. We're a limited service laboratory. We're using the Abbott Binax now. Rapid test, it's a very shallow nasal swab. It takes about thirty seconds to administer. It's five swirls around one nostril, five swirls around the other nostril. It goes into a cardboard card with a reagent and fifteen minutes later we have results. So we are going to be offering this as a voluntary service for students. If if there are parents who would like to accompany and parents have to be there with their child to have the testing done. It's difficult to get a rapid test. We understand that. So provided that your child's not symptomatic, or though we've consulted with our medical director and and his recommendation, we'll be offering at some point after the break, after the spring recess, we'll be offering a voluntary rapid testing program. We are only permitted to test students, active current students in the Yorktown Central School District and staff. We are not able to test siblings who don't go to school here, community members. We we just don't have the licensing for that. So we can test students, we can test staff, and that's all. And and then we're going to continue planning through the logistical considerations. I don't want to oversimplify that. It's one bullet on the slide, but it's probably taken about forty hours or so to this point, and it'll take, I'm sure, a hundred and forty hours more to work through many of the details. You bet you can go to the next slide. It's. We had our first day of school in September and it was terrific. And some parents snapped pictures of the children waiting for the bus and sent it to me. Or in front of their front door, holding a sign that says my first day of kindergarten, my first day of second grade, and so on and so forth. We're going to have an opportunity for a second first day of school when we welcome all of our students back on their respective day. And I understand the nerves and and the concern, but I also understand the excitement that comes with that. And for so many of the students, I think the big question, I'll share this with the board. I went into a class and it was a second grader who said, Dr. Hatter, I have a very big question for you. I said, okay, what what is that question? And the young man says, okay, I sit here on A day. And I know that he sits here on B day. Who's getting the desk when we all come back? And that has been one of the questions I think that has been on the minds of some of our students. I was actually greeting the students at arrival at Mohansick, and I saw one one student, one young lady, and I said, I had the answer to that question. The answer is we're going to jumble all the desks together and you're not going to know which desk that you had. You're going to get a brand new one. So the students are excited about that, and I've been hearing a lot of stories of excitement about having their second first day of school. For our high school students, you're all ready. You're ready. You're ready to come back. We miss you. It's going to be great. You get this second first day of school. For the scene, parents of the seniors class of twenty twenty-one, we see you out there. I see many of you on this call. Know that not a day goes by, that there's not a conversation about planning end of year. And I think we'll be sharing some information in the coming weeks that that I think will be welcome news for our school community. So we're working through details. We're working through the options. Please know that in everything that we do, it's the well-being of our children guiding us. That's, I think that's always been how we've operated, that'll be how we continue to operate. For my kids, for your kids, for all thirty-four hundred of our children, and they're our children, they're they're for the community to embrace and to enjoy. So with that, we're going to be planning for the second first day of school for each of our cohorts, and it's going to be a really exciting opportunity. I will tell you that I got the idea of the second first day from a colleague of mine in another school district. So I will not plant a flag on that idea. It was not my idea. It was the idea of of a really good friend from another school district. So I asked permission if I could use it here in Yorktown, and he said absolutely. So we are looking forward to giving our students a second first day of school. So with that, that concludes the presentation. If there are any questions of the board, I'm happy to address those knowing that I don't have the, all of the answers at this point. And if we had all of the answers, we'd be reopening tomorrow.
I just wanted to thank you first of all for the update. It's quite clear that you and the administration and the principals have taken a lot of time to work through all the details. And I know you can't hit all the details because you only know what you know, but it's quite clear that there's a lot of time and empathy and and consideration going into this. So I I do thank you for that. Mike, did you have a question?
Question, I guess, comment. I agree with Jackie. It's it's obvious and from this presentation and the conversations we've had, just how much planning and work has gone into this reopening and everyone's very excited about it. I I do have a concern and that revolves around the somewhat around the the transportation issue that you talked about earlier. I too drive by one of our schools, one of the elementary schools every morning. And the the drop-off and the busing outside of of Brookside is already problematic, in my opinion. I can't imagine what it's going to be like if we're doubling the number of students. And I I don't know what the solution is, but it's very, I mean, you're talking about putting buses and cars in a very narrow kind of one-directional rope, you know, entrance way. And it it backs up a lot. So I don't I don't know if we have any other ideas as to handling that. But it's it's concerning because that's also a fairly busy street.
Yep, yeah. So I'll share with you that, and and I'll show everyone. The reality is, is that while it seems like there are a lot of cars here. So I I was outside greeting the middle school students at arrival. One of my favorite things to do in the morning is to greet the middle school students when they get to our campus. And I was talking to a gentleman who helps us to direct traffic outside. And he said, Dr. Hatter, I counted sixty cars this morning. It was an A day. So that's a little lower. So we have a count of cars that are coming through our campus. And I said, oh, wow, that that's a lot. How was it before COVID? How how bad? He said, oh, you can be, we had over a hundred and twenty cars that would come through here. So I don't, that number may increase. So I'll tell you, number one, yes, it's crowded. Yes, there are more people driving. But it's still less than the volume of cars that were coming through the campuses prior to COVID. The other thing that I'll share is that we're planning, we're meeting with Yorktown Police Department. They just have a tactical expertise that we can benefit from hearing and learning about. So we have a meeting, I believe, set up Wednesday at twelve thirty or so with some of their personnel who can assist us with some of the planning, just as they did in September. And the police department has been terrific. Chief Noble and his team are second to none, and they provide us a lens and a and a just a strategic expertise when it comes to the traffic patterns and and the way to queue up cars and to move buses off the campus until they're ready to load students for dismissal. There's an expertise there that we benefit greatly from. So yes, we are certainly considering that and planning for that, but make no mistake. There will be more cars on campus than there is tip, than there's typically been this year.
Do you have any other questions? We're good. Thank you so much, Ron.
Okay, thank you. So if it's okay with you, I'm going to set this presentation aside. We're going to move into the next budget presentation. So at this time, Yvette, I believe we're going to include Mr. Rosen and Ms. Forsberg as panelists so that they may also speak to the presentation. So we'll give that a moment to happen. As we're giving that a moment to happen. The instruction and technology budget is probably the most substantial portion of our budget and and it takes so much time to develop. So I just want to thank Lisa and and Mike Rosen and Jen Forsberg, certainly Tom and your team for assembling the the real big details and the really small details of this budget. Because every one of the details included here is important and has an impact on our students. So this is probably the most challenging budget presentation to assemble because we're setting instructional plans and we're setting so many different parts in motion ahead of time. And in a year where it's extraordinarily challenging to think five and six months down the road, that's what our team is doing. And that and that's what we've spent a fair amount of time doing, looking at new options and new opportunities for our students. And it's an exciting situation to be in, to be able to deliver this presentation this evening. So I know they're going to have different roles and in this presentation, but I'll turn it over to Tom for the start of the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter, and good evening, everyone. Tonight, we will deliver our sixth presentation in the seven-part budget series. In the following slides, we will discuss the entirety of the instruction portion of the budget. Next slide, please, Yvette. The organizational chart here depicts the instruction organization that reports to the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and then ultimately to the Superintendent. This chart represents nearly five hundred employees in a variety of different capacities. Next slide, please. The district vision plan ensures we have a clear path and clear expectations when planning for our students, our curriculum and our programs. Along with implementing robust academic programs, we strive to build empathy, creativity, and critical thinking and to provide opportunities for students to explore varied areas of interest. Next slide, please. To that end, all of the components of our educational program are important and valued as we consider the experiences our students will have through their K through twelve years at Y C S D. Our overarching goal is to provide enriching learning opportunities that support the whole child. Therefore, we continually focus on the academic areas, social emotional learning, performing arts, fine arts, athletes, athletics, and physical education, character education in clubs, non-athletic teams and organizations. Next chart, please. The goal of the curriculum and instruction department is to ensure that meaningful instruction programs are in place K through twelve. This includes careful curriculum design based on the New York State learning standards in each area, implementation of effective instructional strategies and student assessment practices that help guide teaching and learning. Student programs and services are in place to serve all of our learners and to support our philosophy of the whole child education. Next slide, please. Here's a quick look at some of the BOCs and Lower Hudson Regional Information Center services included in the budget for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. All of these services are being employed in the current school year. Next slide, please. The instructional staffing throughout the school district includes the titles listed here. Next slide, please. The area of focus for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two reflect our continued commitment to assess and review our curriculum and assessment practices to ensure all students are provided with an instructional program that will prepare them for opportunities in the future. We will continue to ensure our curriculum is aligned with specific New York State content area standards and follow the requisite implementation timeline. We will provide curriculum resources and professional development. At last week's meeting, the board and the community had an opportunity to hear about our existing K through twelve social emotional learning programs. We will continue to build on them and develop social emotional learning support programs. We will continue to expand integration of ESTE, empathy, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. We have made strides in this area over the past few years. In addition, we will explore the new K through twelve computer science standards, which are required to be fully embedded in school districts in New York State by two thousand twenty-four. We will review and revise the K through twelve health curriculum, including the requirements under Aaron's Law. We will continue to work with, work, the work of the district-level cultural awareness committee and support the development of building-level teams. In addition, we are planning to implement implement a new primary mathematics resource at the Mildred Eastang Middle School. Next slide, please. IDEA requires that school districts provide a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment to every student with a disability, the age up to the age of twenty-one or earlier if a high school diploma is awarded. The PPS department is responsible for following all key provisions of the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, IDEA. Next slide, please. The organizational chart for pupil services. The director of PPS is Mr. Michael Rosen and Ms. Caroline Almeida is the assistant director. Next slide, please. This chart reflects numbers of special education students from the October snapshot date for each year. We use the October data from each year to show trends. The total number of preschool and school-aged students with disabilities remain consistent over the past two years. It is important to emphasize that a major focus in this budget is on the level of programs and services that are required to support student needs during our educational journey in the Yorktown Central School District. The district continues to meet the needs of our students through a comprehensive continuum of services that includes related services, consultant teacher, resource room, integrated co-taught classes, and special classes. We also provide K through twelve support in our, in our applied behavior analysis and functional skills. Special class programs eight to one plus two, as well as a six-week extended school year program for eligible students. Next slide, please. In keeping with the regulations of New York State, the Yorktown Central School District is required to provide special education services to school-aged, non-resident students who attend private schools within the Yorktown Central School District. The next slide, please. Our district of location responsibilities currently include the following private schools, St. Patrick's and the Talmitura Beth Yashiel School. Students are eligible for section five oh four combination plan if they have a mental or physical impairment that substantially limits a major life activity and who are not eligible for services through IDEA. The number of five oh four plans in the district continues to increase each year. Next slide, please. Yorktown Central School District utilizes a variety of combinations of special education programming, supports and services to serve students within the least restrictive environment. Next slide, please. The budget includes the cost for tuitions for students who are recommended for out-of-district programs. This chart indicates the number of students who attend who attend other public school districts, Putnam, Northern, Westchester BOCs, Southern Westchester BOCs, private day schools, and residential placements. Next slide, please. As noted previously, we currently have seventeen students recommended by the Committee on Special Education who attend full-day special education programs within Putnam, Northern, Westchester and Southern Westchester BOCs. The the budget includes costs for tuitions and related services for these students. Next chart, please. There was an increase of one special education teacher for the two thousand twenty twenty-one school year based on student needs. We're currently monitoring our maximum capacity for certain programs, and we may require additional personnel next school year. The budget for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year continues to support that, the one point oh FTE behavior analyst position that was added for the current school year to provide behavioral intervention, staff training, functional beha- functional behavioral assessments and behavior intervention plans. Due to increasing demands for speech and language and occupational therapy services, we currently utilize outside contractors to ensure that IEP mandates are met. The current budget proposal supports adding an additional one point oh FTE speech language therapist and adjust our occupational therapy department from two OTs and two COTAs to full-time occupational therapists and two full-time occupational therapy assistants. The added positions would decrease the need for outside contractors. Based on the increased social emotional needs this year within the high school and with the support of the Board of Education, we're able to add additional clinical team members, psychologists to the high school in January. The additional support has been a valuable resource, and we're monitoring our continued needs for the upcoming school year. Next slide, please. We continue to review all CSC procedures to ensure compliance with all state mandates. As part of the eligibility process for special education, the CSC reviews all RTI data, which can include building-level intervention services in the areas of reading, math, speech, occupational therapy, and social emotional supports. When planning for special education programs, we consider future needs over a multi-year period. For example, based on current trends in the area of social emotional functioning of our students, we begin to explore programs and services for our students. Utilizing district staff, we've completed the requirements to become certified trainers in the area of therapeutic crisis intervention. We're planning to provide training to those staff members identified by their building principal and the pupil personnel department. We're currently planning to provide training to two cohorts during the summer of 2020. We will continue to meet the building administrators and staff to review new programs and services to determine efficacy of the supports provided. Next slide, please. Next, we'll move on to the Technology Department. Next slide. With a small technology support staff, we were able to manage a state-of-the-art technology infrastructure that provides access to an ever-growing number of digital tools for over 4,000 users. Our successful partnership with Edutec, coupled with our district IT staff, enables us to offer the latest in mobile learning, online collaboration, and 24/7 access to learning content and resources. During the 2020-21 school year, Alyssa Arroyo joined the department as a technology support specialist, primarily supporting Mohansick and Brookside. The district had this position planned in the budget as an ESTEAM teacher for several years. For 21-22, we will increase our technology support from three and a half technicians to four to support six buildings and central office, as well as our families. Next slide, please. There is very little that happens in our school district that does not involve either the network and/or access to the Internet. During the spring of 2020, this district upgraded the wireless infrastructure to include the latest models of access points, new servers, and faster Internet. Our students and staff have come to expect immediate and reliable access to their content and other web-based resources, including hundreds of video conferences per day. This proved especially true during remote and hybrid learning to have access to content anytime and anywhere. We continue to build more mobile and flexible learning environments which support our ESTEAM initiatives and a variety of learning devices. Next slide, please. We have a longstanding relationship with Best Web, who has been our Internet service provider for a number of years. Recently, Best Web was acquired by First Light. We do not expect any changes to our service during this transition. The wireless infrastructure was upgraded during the spring of 2020, and our bandwidth was expanded as well. We added additional outdoor Wi-Fi to the Yorktown High School campus and added wireless to the French Hill School to support the remote learning program. Next slide, please. The list of software on this slide and the next slide is a sample of the many software tools that the Technology Department supports and manages to keep the district safely connected. New to 2020-2021, ConnectWise for remote support for our staff, DirectPrint.io for wireless printing due to Google Cloud Print, ending in December, Education Frameworks to vet new software and apps against ED Law 2D compliance. Next slide, please. An online help desk system for our students and families to reach our technicians, Microsoft Azure Cloud, which is in progress to better aid in cloud storage, and live video streaming for our athletic events and other future events for our community to view on YouTube Live. Next chart, please. Here's a small sample of over 150 apps and software that are supported in the district. By the past two years, all software and apps are vetted through an approval and review process. The review process ensures smooth communication, budget planning, and approving vendors against ED Law 2 Data Privacy Regulations. Next slide, please. The school closure in March of 2020 saw the quick transition from in-person learning to remote learning. The district utilized our existing online tools and acquired additional tools to support teaching and learning for all of our students. We also saw an increased need for professional development support, as well as technical support during this transition. The technical support included opening up a family technology help desk where parents and students could and still can enter tickets. We saw a 46% increase in help desk tickets from March 2020 through March of 21 compared to the prior year. This includes over 1,300 tickets from our families. Next slide, please. Our district experienced a cyber attack on October 12, 2020. The investigation revealed the malware attack which mirrored a similar attack to another school district in our area. With the increase in these types of attacks in our area and nationally, we've upgraded our security fabric to include a host of tools with upgraded analytics, monitoring, and protection. Additionally, the district contracted with Blue Orange to conduct a series of penetration testing and vulnerability scans. The information from Blue Orange testing will assist us with improving our security of our network, as well as a cybersecurity professional learning from our faculty and staff. Next slide, please. 2020 saw a disruption to traditional in-person learning. Our district went to a one-to-one environment in a short amount of time. Students continue to have access to iPads and Chromebooks to support learning in all types of environments. Teachers have access to Chromebooks, one-to-one laptops, and document cameras to teach in different environments. We will continue to work to improve collaboration in and out of the classroom while maintaining a safe digital space. Additionally, we are looking to improve our aging phone and security systems. Next chart, please. Now, we will quickly review the total cost of the instruction budget. Next chart, please. The total instruction portion of the budget increases as a result of our continued investment in teachers in the classroom environment. Total instruction investments will increase by just over $682,000 in the next budget year, a 1.1% increase. We have captured the cost impact of all known retirements, new hires, and replacements in this summary chart. The costs included in the summary chart above are a net of 19 teacher retirements, the highest single-year number in more than 20 years. We continue to add new teaching and support positions in the budget to respond to any increases in enrollment or mandated services that may arise as the school year unfolds. We'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Mrs. O'Shea, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Mr. Rosen, Director of PPS, and Ms. Forsberg, Director of Technology, are also available to answer your questions. Thank you, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
That was a lot, Tom. Thank you very much.
Yes, I could use some water, frankly.
Great presentation. We'll start. Pete, did you have any questions?
Yes. I think what's really impressive is when you look at the Technology Department of four, led by Jennifer, and for the amount that they cover, it's... I know a lot of companies that have a lot more, and we work with a lot less. It's very admirable. This question is for Jen. What steps have been taken to stay in compliance with ED Law 2D and other cyber security concerns?
Hi, good evening. With regards to... So I'll speak to ED Law 2D first, and we want to do anything we can to safeguard the PII, which is the Personally Identifiable Information of our students and school personnel. So we've implemented a few things over the course of the past couple of years. We have a new software and app request form, so we vet all software and apps and even some new Chrome extensions before we allow installation and use. And this extends to software that is free, so it's paid and free software. So we encourage any of our staff members to use the form instead of trying to use the program to make sure that we're in compliance. We vet all of our software against a program called ED Frameworks. It allows us to see a data privacy score. It ranks all software from a zero to five. And we can quickly see in about 10 categories what's missing from the software, where it needs improvements. And through that program on the database management website, you can see the vetted software that we have. There's a public portal. We have a data protection officer that was approved by the Board of Education, David Lees, and he helps to monitor our compliance with the regulations. So our two departments work in conjunction for all the software. And as I mentioned, we do have a district inventory that is published on our website. And moving to cybersecurity, so we are using the NIST framework, which is the National Institute of Standards and Technology. So it's a framework to guide us and ensure that we're in compliance against these regulations. We've started the work in conjunction with Edutec, so they host monthly sessions. It's a rather large document, and they're guiding us through what we need to do first that's most important. So if something happens again, we have all the information that we need, and it helps to identify areas in our district to strengthen the district. We've implemented and upgraded different tools and software to do different things, as was shown on one of the slides, to detect and monitor and analyze constantly in the district to help ensure any known vulnerabilities are... We have alerts. We have alerts in place, more alerts in place now. And we did contract with Blue Orange Compliance, and they recently, as of last week, did penetration testing and a vulnerability scan. It's a mouthful. During the week, just a normal week, just to see how the district flows. And once we have that report, I will share that information. But some of it, they did share, and we've already implemented some of their recommendations.
Thank you. Mike, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Jackie. I guess along the similar lines, one of the slides mentioned about upgrading our phone and, I think, security camera systems. What exactly would that entail?
Sure. So both systems are aging. Our security system is around 10 years old, so the hardware is beginning to fail. Some of it has failed, and we've quickly replaced our analog cameras with digital cameras. So we want to take an approach where, instead of fixing them as they may fail or start to fail, because we know when they're about to fail, we would rather replace them. As most of our cameras are analog, we want to move to a digital platform and move to upgraded software, so it's more mobile. And as you can imagine, the past 10 years, the technologies really increased. So although the cameras, we can see what's on the camera, but the newer cameras are more clear and allow us to upgrade. We can install a camera, and a new technology comes out in six months, we would be able to implement it. It would just be part of the software. So that's part of the security, and we have a few vendors presenting to us over the next few weeks. And similar with the phones, the phone system is around 10 to 12 years old. The phones work. The hardware is working. The software is about out of date, and in order for us to... We need to upgrade to the next level of software to ensure that our phone system is supported. We can do that with our existing phones, but when we're ready to do the next level, so two more versions of the software, we would then need to upgrade our phones. So the difference, how we would do that with the phones, it could happen a little more quickly because it's just upgrading. We would pause the phones as they are, pick a day, back it up, and then upgrade to the software, and then we'd have to reboot all the phones, which I'm told takes around three to four hours. So that's how the phone system would work. And then in about these 12 to 18 months, we would need to discuss upgrading the hardware because the hardware is fine right now.
Thank you.
Rashmi?
Yeah, I think my question is for Lisa O'Shea. Lisa, could you elaborate a bit more on the new computer science standards and what that might look like for our district?
So sure, Rashmi. In December of this past year, December of 2020, the State Board of Regents adopted the new K-12 Computer Science Standards, and they are comprised of five key areas. And I'm going to look at my notes so I say correctly. Impacts of computing, computational thinking, networks and system design, cybersecurity, and digital literacy. And the standards are grouped into graded bands, so there's K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and 8, and then 9 through 6. With all of these standards that are handed to us from the state, we are given a timeline for implementation, which is from rollout to full implementation K-12. So what that looks like for us moving forward is now until this coming August, we're supposed to just familiarize ourselves with the standards and the timeline. Then the state is giving two years to districts to really begin to develop their curriculum around these K-12 standards to identify resources and to provide professional development. So that takes us into August of 2023. Starting in 2023 of September, any credit-bearing computer science course at the high school level will need to be fully aligned with the new standards. And it is the expectation of the State Education Department that in September of 2024, every school district will have a vertically-aligned K-12 Computer Science program in place. We're already a little bit farther ahead in terms of the work we've done in ESTEAM over the last few years that I believe that we're not going to be waiting until 2024 to have a fully embedded computer science curriculum K-12. If we can, you know, stay focused on our curriculum work around this area now that we have the standards, we can identify resources, identify professional development. You know, we're looking to move forward at a pace that makes sense to us in Yorktown.
Great, thank you.
Cheryl?
I had another question for Lisa. I know the district is constantly evaluating curriculum and the materials that support that curriculum to ensure that it meets our needs. Do you anticipate any large curriculum purchases for next year?
So in a typical year, the budget is developed with the help of the building administrators along with their teacher leaders in the various departments. And typically, we have curriculum resources and supports built into any budget year. However, in moving into the 21-22 school year, we are looking to invest in a new primary mathematics resource at the middle level for our middle school. Right now, we are looking at two specific programs. And once we have that determined, and we can talk about a timeline for implementation, how that would be rolled out, then we would have a greater understanding about what that exact cost would be for next year. So that's one of the areas we're invested in. We're also looking to consider some K-5 resources for English Language Arts that would supplement our existing comprehensive scope and sequence documents at each of our grade levels. So those are the areas beyond what is typically something we would do every year. It's the math at the middle school and K-5 English Language Arts resources to support the work we're doing there.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa?
Yeah. Tom, thanks for that great presentation. I actually have two questions for Lisa, but before I ask my questions, I just want to echo the comments made about Jennifer and our IT team. I mean, it's amazing with everything that's been going on, with everybody being at home and the increased use. I know we've used the help desk and using a ticket, and the response has been phenomenal. So I know you guys have been hard at work behind the scenes, so thank you so much. You've made it seem so seamless. It's very much appreciated. Lisa, there was a comment on one of the slides about... And I wrote it down because I didn't know what it was, and implement the primary mathematics resource at the middle school. Can you tell me what that is?
So Lisa, you're asking about the math resource at the middle school? Okay, so the current program that's in use at the middle school now, that has been a resource for teachers to utilize within their curriculum. The digital licenses for that are expiring. So we have two programs that are being explored with the help of Mary Froats, our mathematics curriculum coach. She's working with several teachers in the middle school now, doing lessons on both programs that we're looking at. I will share right now that one of the programs we're looking at is the Into Math program at the middle level, which is what we're using at K-5. We're also using another, looking at another program from Abra Hill and comparing side by side, you know, what would be best for our middle school teachers and students. You know, we're really looking for a combination of conceptual math, as well as practical math, and how we can find a good blend of both as we move towards the full implementation of the next-generation math standards.
Great, thank you. So along those lines, I know that the district provides a lot of support and professional development for our staff and going along a new math program, I guess we'll need to do that. What have we been doing in terms of the past year without, I guess, our professional development days? How are we supporting our staff in that regard at the current time?
So typically, in any given year, we rely very heavily on our colleagues at Putnam Northern West Justive Voces and the Lyric to help us with all kinds of professional development around anything teacher and teaching and learning related, anything related to the standard, social emotional learning, educational tax, special education. We've been able to continue some of that work this year, albeit not as intensive as we typically do, because we've, we've really looked hard about not removing teachers from the classroom. They need to be with the students. They need to be able to continue to work on their teaching and learning. What we did invest a lot of time in this year with the support of our colleagues at the Putnam Northern West Justive Voces and at the Lyric was professional development specific to how do you teach in a hybrid concurrent remote environment? And what does that look like? What are the platforms we can use? What are the resources that make sense in that environment? So for this year, a lot of our professional development focused in those areas. Our principals have been very strategic about faculty meeting time to grade level after school time. And we've been able to keep our curriculum work moving and moving forward in a way that makes sense for us in this year. It's just been a different look for us in terms of going out for regional professional development and being available to that type of, of support. I do know that once the situation changes back, our teachers will be very much engaged regionally with professional development. We are very lucky to have teachers and administrators here who want to continue to learn, want to continue to build on their craft. And they go out into these workshop opportunities. They come back, they share that information with their colleagues, and then they embed what they learned into their teaching and instruction. So, you know, it's been a different year for everything and even for professional development. But we have been able to make good strides where we needed to.
I just want to punctuate that point that Lisa made by saying that much of it's happening in-house. And the addition of the K-3 E-Team Support Teacher that we've had has really complemented our 4 or 5 E-Team Support Teacher as well. And they have really provided, just have been just a tremendous resource for the faculty and staff in the building. So it was a great strategic addition to the staff at a really important and crucial time for us when going out for professional development. Would be limited to virtual options. We have people on staff who are assisting in that regard. And then certainly, the coordinators in the LA and in math, K-12, have done such a remarkable job. So I just want to punctuate that point that some of it was strategic and hiring so that we could support the different levels.
Thank you. My question is for Mike Rosen. The snapshot you gave us of special ed students is in October. So one did, have we had a higher than normal increase at this time of year? And then the other part of the question is, do you anticipate higher needs for these same students who are returning, who have been remote or partially remote when they come back in September?
Hi. So we are seeing a higher number of referrals. I think some of it in just how the models have been going. So we've had a number increase throughout the district, K to 12. There have been a number of CSE meetings. We have had a lot, large number of students not eligible for special education services. So we've looked to try to implement other supports for them, whether it's building level services. And I know now that we'll be coming back to school, there'll be more opportunities some of ours for some of our other services. So we have seen an uptick and we're continuing to monitor it because this is the time of year when it typically will increase. But we did see it a little bit in, a little bit earlier, but not a lot of classified students came out of those referrals. And for students, and for students coming back, the staff has done a great job of keeping up with the work. Our summer skills program last year, 612, we're working with students after school hours and providing some other skill supports for students who are mostly fully remote. So I think a lot of supports have been in place to help when students return to school.
Thank you, thank you. Pete, did you have any other questions?
Sorry about that. One more, Tom, in a lot of the previous years, we've accounted for contingency positions in the budget. Have we done that this year?
We have. We have eight contingency positions in the budget this year. And as mentioned in the presentation, we have captured 19 teacher retirements this year, which is an extraordinarily high number. In an average year, it's usually five or six. So we have taken some of the savings of the teacher retirements replaced by newer, newer, lower salaried teachers and tried to build up, build up some of the contingency positions, which is why we're at eight this year.
Thank you.
Mike?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Rashmi?
I'm good. Thank you.
Cheryl?
I'm good. Thanks.
Lisa?
All set. Thank you.
I just had one more question for Mike. Sorry, Mike. Can you just talk a little bit about the Certified Behavioral Analyst that is at Brookside School and how that has enhanced the program at all?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for asking, Jackie. The consistency that that has provided us, I can't even put into words. And that's coming from faculty and mostly from parents. I was in a septum meeting and one of the parents asked if it was going to continue because in the past, we've had different outside consultants come in. And everyone who's a behaviorist will have different plans, different thoughts. So the consistency of one person helping with behavior plans, helping to train staff has just been a home run for the school district. It's something we're looking to expand going forward. The level of support that this one person provides, five days a week, full time, it would cost us about twice, two and a half times to get that level of support with outside contractors. Parents have been pleased, staff has been pleased. And we're seeing just some of the students really strive with the consistent work with one person.
Thank you. So no other questions? Are we good? I just wanted to thank you, Mike, Jen, Lisa. I mean, this was a big part of the budget and we're so appreciative of all the hard work. I mean, we say it all the time, but this wasn't an easy year. It hasn't been easy since February of last year. And we just appreciate everything you've done, everything that gets thrown your way. You just pick it up and you keep moving forward. And we thank you, our students, thank you. So yeah, just thank you for everything.
Thank you. Yeah, we just have a terrific team. And I'm so grateful to be part of such a terrific team. I mean, when you look at the talent that we've assembled here, not just in the leadership team that we have with, with Tom and Lisa and Jen and Mike. And I see Dr. McGinnis on the call and Dennis and the principals in the buildings who are remarkable and our faculty and staff. Everyone is working in the best interest of children. And that's something that I think is a continuous theme that you hear in each of our presentations. And I just want to thank them all. You see the presentations and everything's put together. But what we don't see is after the hack and we found out that all 41 servers were compromised. I really don't think that Jennifer slept for six days until everything was restored. And the entire team comes at the work with this mentality. So I'm just so grateful for each of you and I just wanted to acknowledge each of you publicly. I just, two quick things, just I want to acknowledge our middle school science Olympia team. They medaled in 10 events at regionals and qualified for the state tournament. I'm so proud of them for that. We also, as part of our commitment to the fine and performing arts, we're establishing, we've established the Triumph Honor Society in music. And that's just another step for us as we grow our footprint in the fine and performing arts. And then my hat's off to the teachers and the students who have taken up this effort. I'm just so proud of them for taking on this initiative. It's a heavy lift to get your own chapter in the high school. And we have one and that's absolutely remarkable. Next week is my final budget presentation. It's at this point, just so everyone's aware, it's the superintendent's budget. I will be presenting my budget to the Board of Education for their consideration. The board will then do their work with the budget, ask good questions like they did tonight in every, every one of the preceding presentations. And then on April 12th, any modifications, any changes, the board will then adopt the budget at that point. So next week, I will be delivering the superintendent's budget to the Board of Education. And again, they'll sit with the budget and review it and work through it in the interim until adoption on April 12th. So anyone on the call, anyone who's going to be watching this meeting tomorrow, and I'm getting emails now, so sorry, Dr. Hatter, I can't be on tonight, but will it be on the website? Yes, the meetings will be posted to our website. They're on our YouTube channel for all to watch as well. So for anyone who is going to view the presentation, I invite you back again next week here about the budget presentation, hear about the process, the great questions that our board asks, and some of the reopening updates as well. So Jackie, that concludes, thank you so much. That concludes the superintendent's report. I appreciate the time and the opportunity.
Thank you. We actually have a board discussion item tonight. And that's, we wanted to discuss where the budget vote should be held this year. In light of COVID, we are anticipating that in some way, shape or form, the governor will allow us to have some in-person voting. But I think we have to consider the safety of our students and our staff and the comfort level of them. And so we had a couple of options. One, we could keep it at Mohansick, or the other is maybe potentially move it this year only to French Hill. So it's just up for discussion for the board. I don't know who would like to speak first. Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I think in light of what we're trying to accomplish in, in, you know, mitigating the risk to students and staff, not sure it makes a lot of sense to bring a lot, I mean, thousands of members of the community into one of our buildings. Seems like an undue burden. If we can move it somewhere like French Hill, to me, that makes more sense.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I agree with what Mike said. If French, since we have the option of using French Hill as an option, then I think we should move it, especially with our kids returning to school in April for our staff. It makes sense.
Considering it's May and it's fairly warm most of the time, can we look into maybe having it somewhere outside, which mitigates the risk for almost everybody at that point? I don't know if that's something that we can do within our election budget or, you know, vote budget. Or if it's something that's, that's possible, I don't know. Maybe we need to talk to our facilities department. I'm not sure.
Absolutely, Jack. We can investigate that with the district clerk and the director of facilities to. French Hill does have a nice awning in the front. So I know that name was, that facility was, was you, was mentioned. So if we decided that that was an option there, it's probably more conducive to an outdoor voting environment, obviously weather permitting. But yes, I can look into it with the district clerk, director of facilities and report back at the next meeting.
Right. I'm assuming we only need power for the voting machines. We don't need internet. Is that correct?
Correct. At this point, it's just power, but we do have Wi-Fi access at French Hill. So should we need for the laptops to connect for the software system that's used to manage the vote, we would have that option available to us. And we have the director of technology on. So Jen, if the board decides that the vote's going to be at French Hill, we're going to have to have Wi-Fi access there.
We just add it to her plate because she has nothing else to do.
If we, I agree, we should move it to French Hill if, if possible, since we're going to have some kids in the building. If we do it outside at French Hill, which would be great if it became, could be one of those beautiful 70 degree days we had last week, if you could order that up, Dr. Hatter, that would be fabulous. If we do it in the front by that awning, are we blocking the egress to the building? Is that problematic for the fire department, for the tenants of the building?
Those are, and those are great questions. And those are the notes that I'm taking right now to, for us to be able to look into. It's a fairly wide opening, but there are minimal distance, minimum distances that we have to meet to satisfy fire code and blocking egress. So those are all the questions that we absolutely will investigate. If I hear, if I hear what the board is, is saying through this conversation is you'd like to move it out of one of our school. And I, and correct me if I, if I misheard. You'd like to move this away from our school buildings just in recognition of health and safety of faculty, staff and students in the building. So you're thinking about French Hill. If an outdoor location is viable at French Hill, which I will investigate with the district clerk, director of facilities, we'll include Mr. Cole in that walkthrough as well. So we'll look into the outdoor if that's not a possibility. We do have facilities there. We do have our 1010 recrea, not our program, but the 1010 Recreation Remote Learning Centers there. I just want to thank them first and foremost for their partnership and the work that they've done with our students on their remote days. They've done an outstanding job there. But there, with students returning, their need for space has been reduced. So we will have some options there, Tom, or maybe the cafeteria could be an option. Is that air, and that's an air conditioning location, I believe?
The cafeteria has central air conditioning, so it would be ideal for these purposes. And there's enough area on the grounds, I think, where we could contemplate using some kind of an outside venue if necessary.
Okay, so we'll look into it. So those are great options to have, but I think I hear the board, unless I'm mishearing the board, that let's consider French Hill. Outdoors is better than indoors, but let's hear our options next week.
Well, Pete and Shrold need to weigh in too.
Very good.
Just, this is just more of a, maybe another question that while you're discussing it internally is, do any of our leases with our tenants restrict us from doing something like that? And accessing the spaces or anything within that building?
No, it's a, it's a very good question, but the answer, the short answer is no. We've had other elections there, primary elections and war state, the statewide offices and so forth. So we're on good solid ground there.
Cheryl, do you have any input?
Yeah, I agree with what everyone has said so far. I definitely agree with moving in, out of Mohansick into French Hill and outside would be best if that's possible in light of the situation that's going on. I even think about increased traffic patterns that Mohansick and, you know, having people come in at the, you know, at the dismissal and arrival times that it may even help, you know, help alleviate traffic issues that we may have had if we have it at Mohansick. So just another thought. So I think it's a great idea.
My only one, the only consideration I have, I think that that's, it's probably our best bet is because it's been at Mohansick for forever. If we do decide to make this move just for this year, we have to make sure we find a way to let the entire community, not just the school community, but the entire Yorktown community know well in advance and often enough. And maybe we can enlist maybe the town for help to do that as well. Because we don't want, I don't want to stop anybody from voting because they didn't know where to go. So I just want to make sure if we do this, which I think we should, that we allow everybody time to know.
Absolutely. We can, we can reach out to the town. They've, they've been terrific to work with. And we can post on our digital sign on 202. We can put the signage throughout our various campuses. 202 is a really highly traveled road, so I think if we post something, maybe it's a fixture there as well as the digital sign. I think we have some options. There's, I'm sure we can work with the town for some of their notification systems and our notification systems. So what I'm hearing is let's consider French Hill. And then what we're going to do is look into just where on the French Hill campus would we hold this vote, if I'm hearing this correctly?
Yes. And I think our only timeline is we need to know in enough time for our district clerk for that signal to notice it. So is that Monday, next Monday that it has to be noticed or next Monday we have to make the decision by?
Next, I believe next Monday we have to finalize the decision. So, but it sounds like we have a pretty solid understanding of the vote location at this time. It's just a matter of where on the campus we're going to have that vote.
I think so. If we can make it happen, I think it's best for our students and staff.
And I want to thank you for that. I, I just, and this is why this board is absolutely amazing. And you're terrific and I appreciate you all because you, you just always put the students just so front and center in every decision that you because you, you, you just always put the students just so front and center in every decision that you make and you know, the thought of having a thousand students, two thousand students come through a venue, although we try to keep everyone separate. Some people do want to come in through the front and I really appreciate that, and I believe our faculty and staff will be equally appreciative of the decision that the board made this evening.
Thank you. Okay, where are we up to? Oh, we're up to personnel. Uh, we have a resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to sign and approves the terms of an agreement between the district and the Yorktown Congress of Teachers for an extension of the notice for resignation for the purpose of retirement for employee nineteen twenty-sixth, dated March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, which shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And then I have a personal item. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have a resignation for the purpose of retirement.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Another business resolution. This is long and I'm not going to read it all because we do it every year. So be it resolved that the Yorktown Central School District appoints Jackie Carbone as a permanent chairperson for the twenty twenty-one annual vote and election. Be it resolved that the Board of Education appoints the two chief election inspectors as listed below and resolved that the Board of Education appoints the following individuals as listed below as inspectors and alternate election inspectors. Resolved that the Board of Education, the Yorktown Central School District appoints Judith Bloom and Jenny Menton Grasso to serve as Board of Registration Inspectors. Be it resolved, the Board of Education appoints Joanne O'Dwyer to serve as the assistant clerk for the twenty twenty-one school election. Be it further resolved that the district clerk shall give notice as prescribed by law at the time and the place of holding the annual school district meeting election vote on the annual budget and may amend the notice of the annual meeting at, as in her discretion may be necessary.
Tom, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are up to public comment, and this one is going to be live. So if anybody's in the audience wishing to speak, I'm going to ask that your first and last name be, match your screen name and that you raise your hand. We have one that was sent in by email. I see that the person is online. I don't know if they would like to ask that question live, or they want me to read it. So I'll give you guys a second to see if you want to raise your hand. I'm just going to read the one email. It came from Michelle Trucay on Hayes Drive. I saw Representative Mondaire James Twitter feed, a breakdown of the American Rescue Plan funds given to each school district. I felt that the allotment of one point nine million dollars seemed low in comparison to other districts of similar size. I was wondering if the board knew how they came up with this number and if they think this was a fair amount. Thank you for everything you've done for our district. I'm just going to ask you again if anybody else has any other questions. All right, Ron, I'll turn it over to you for response.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you so much for that comment. That, that actually, I would have liked to see us get a little more money too. There is a funding formula that's followed. A lot of it has to do with the Title I funding formula. Tom, I'll turn it over to you to elaborate that on that a little bit more, but much of it is contingent on the federal Title I formula that, that's used for the Title I monies that districts are allocated on an annual basis.
That is, that is the reason, uh, almost in its entirety, Title I funds are allocated to school districts in large part based on families residing in those communities with significant financial need. So as you looked at those reports and the allocation, the allocations to school districts reflect that level of population within their school districts. So the Title I formula is from the federal government and is followed, was followed for the last round of stimulus money as well.
Tom, can I ask another question about the rescue plan funds? Is that money that's already accounted for in our budget based upon the governor's use of stimulus money?
It is. So it is part of our numbers right now, but I, I will tell you, two, two proposals came out today, one from each side of the legislature in Albany, and both of them called for the repeal almost entirely of the governor's proposal. So I don't expect the, the manner in which we've reflected revenue, I don't expect it to survive the final iteration of the budget that gets passed by April first, hopefully. So I, but I do expect it to be a component. I just expect, based on what I'm reading, that the this elimination of certain kinds of aid will not happen as was proposed by the budget. Dr. Hatter, I don't know if you've heard anything similar to that.
Going to really, Tom, when we exchange notes, the notes match up. So I would just echo everything that you shared.
So I just want to be clear, we're not getting one point nine million dollars more. It's already been accounted for in all of the figurings from the state.
That's what the, the initial language indicates that that's true.
Okay. All right. I just did. It would be wonderful if we got it, but okay, all right. So we are up to, um, board comment. Lisa?
Nothing more. Thank you.
Cheryl?
I'm good. Thanks.
Rashmi?
I'm good. Thank you.
Mike?
I'm good. Thank you.
Pete?
Well, just, uh, again, another great budget reporting for, over the last several weeks from the Ron, you, Tom, staff. It's, it's been great. Very informative, very detailed. You guys do an unbelievable job presenting the budget. So to make it understandable for not only for us, for my feeble mind, but for the community. So thank you.
Yeah, um, I, I echo that and I was grateful to, um, Mike Rosen and Jen Forsberg for staying and, um, presenting to us tonight and to Lisa Shay. Tom, you always do a phenomenal job. So thank you very much. Ron, thank you for everything. Thank you for your presentation. It was extremely clear. The reopening is planned, it looks like it's, it's really in full swing. So we really thank you for all of that hard work. Lisa, Tom, Ron, anything else? And can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.